The appointed time has arrived. This is 7:03. Welcome to the Town of Mashpee Planning Board Meeting, Wednesday, February 20th, 2019, at the required meeting room, 7:00 p.m. If anybody has any questions or is making a presentation, please go before the microphones. And we are being televised and recorded.
State their names, too.
Oh, and state your name and your business. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have to pass on the approval minutes without Mary being here.
And the other members, too.
And the other members, yeah. Approval not required. The submission of an A and R subdivision plan submitted by Cape and Islands Engineering on behalf of Margaret S. Thurber, Thurber Trust, to create four buildable lots located at 264 Plymouth Road, Plymouth Pond Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Matt Costa, Cape and Islands Engineering, representing the applicant, Margot Thurber, just a property owner. As you said in the statement, we're here tonight under approval not required application, Form A, to subdivide approximately 7.6 acres into four buildable lots. Property fronts on Plymouth Pond Road and Cove Road. The zoning over here is 80,000 square foot zoning. We showed the four lots fronting along Plymouth and Cove Road. They all meet the required frontage and minimum lot size. That's really it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Most of them on Cove Road?
Correct. Lots two, one, two, and three.
Yeah.
And that, and that's a buildable lot?
Lot number three.
Let me see, there's one, two, three, four, the lot, the one way at the end of Cove Road.
That lot was created under a different plan. That's not our lot.
Oh, so you're only...
Yeah, it is buildable, yes.
But you're only looking at what, for three lots?
Nope, four. We're the lots, one, two, three, and four.
Three is down here.
Yeah, I see, and that one. I forgot there was a hill. And what's that, what's that road on?
I'm sorry?
Lot three. What's that?
What, say again?
Lot three. Oh, that goes all the way up to Cove Road?
Yes.
And that's where you get the frontage?
Correct.
Okay. And what's that easement that, oh, all right? I thought that was two different lots, but it's an easement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eleven seventeen is a little tricky to read. The bigger plan...
Yeah, the bigger one is better.
Has a better outline of the...
I need bigger glasses.
I don't want to share that.
There's no dimensions on what? Lot three, though, on Cove Road.
No, it's got 132.97 to an angle point and then another 20.28.
Okay, right there, that road through there, there. Yeah.
This, Lot four, this, where it runs beside Lot three?
Yes.
Is that to just give access to Wakeby?
Exactly.
Yeah.
All the requirements are relevant, Alice Charlie.
When I first saw this, my memory went back to a number of years ago. There was a series of lots that were divided on the other side of Cove Road that required a certain amount of upgrading to Cove Road. If you look down on the, on the Lot two, there's sort of a little curve in that road there.
Yeah.
Well, somewhere in this area, they actually put a turnaround and put some drainage in for the lots on the other side. And I don't recall, I don't have the file that was, Evan got out the file that he saw, and it dates back to 2000, so it's 19 years ago.
Yeah.
I don't remember the details of everything that took place. My only suggestion would be if this is filed tonight as an A and R, that you have 21 days to actually render a decision, and you might want to just go out there and inspect the construction to see if you feel that it's substantial enough.
All right.
It's a private way. It's not a way that was, it's not a townway, apparently, if it is a private way.
It's a private road, yes.
Yeah, and I don't recall that it was on a plan that was approved under the subdivision control law. Maybe Matt knows, but I don't recall that it was. I'm just suggesting you take a look at it, because I drove out there last week when I was down on another matter, and it narrows up after you get down onto Cove Roadways. It becomes rather narrow. And it has three different widths in it. The first part of it from Plymouth Pond Road is pretty good.
Yeah.
It's a steep, sort of a steep approach, but once you go over the top of the crest, it's fairly wide. It was paved, and then that narrows down. There's a big puddle at the end of the, of the slope, down at the bottom of the hill, where there was some drainage installed. I think it might have been a paved waterway. Perhaps it went over into the adjacent land.
Is that where that curve is there?
It may be beyond that.
It's beyond, yeah.
I'm, I'm not...
I remember years ago, driving down there, it was like...
Yeah, so it, it has two or three different widths and varies in construction, so I'm just suggesting as a private road, you might want to take a look at it, since you do have time under the statute to do it before you endorse the plan.
Yeah.
The, wasn't, isn't there a bylaw that states, under the subdivision control laws, whenever you create a subdivision, there you have to provide access to a waterway? I thought there was something back in the 70s or early 80s.
Access to a waterway?
You mean a roadway?
Waterway.
You mean to Wakeby Pond?
Public access.
Not aware of any if it's private land.
Yeah.
I'd have to look.
I mean, if, if they have, if their property actually fronts on Wakeby Pond, it says it's a great pond, so it's actually a pond of the Commonwealth, but that doesn't mean that they don't have frontage down to it.
You have right on the shoreline to watch it, but, you know, there must be access somewhere, like the town or the...
I'm not aware of any statute that says you have to create access to the pond.
Neither am I, nor am I aware of any sort of deed or easement or otherwise that would grant any access to the public or anyone else that's not included in this subdivision over that property.
Submission of an A and R. You're really just reviewing two primary criteria, and that's the lot size minimum and does it have adequate frontage to a roadway?
But is this considered a roadway or is it a driveway?
No, it's, it's a road.
It's a road.
It's a roadway, so it's registered somewhere, like it's laid out?
Yeah, it was actually, I think, I brought...
It is, and they actually subdivided off of this Cove Road four.
So it should be laid out to a subdivision layout, right?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
I brought this, too. This was the subdivision on the other side of the roadway that Charlie had mentioned, and here's Cove Road. You can see that little hitch in the roadway here, so this is the land we're talking about, here, Arthur up there, the owner. Then this is the road layout here, and the...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll go take a look at it, but it meets the criteria.
If, if it does, I mean, if it's a private way such as this, and this particular land wasn't shown on the subdivision plan which is approved, then you make the determination as to whether or not the access is adequate to be signed as an A and R.
And if we don't see it as adequate, we can make them widen it or fix it up before it's adequate?
If the board determines that it's not adequate, then you can ask that it be done, but it has to be done under subdivision control.
Okay, that's why I was asked about the subdivision.
So, so the criteria for adequate would be width, grade, and construction, correct?
It would be a fire department saying, I got my truck up there and I could turn around. What if we're gonna come down with a fire truck and go into the lake? And you have to have a fire truck go all the way down there and put the house, if there's a fire on the house on Lot, you know, the end lot, Lot three, and he's gonna be able to, how is it, where's the house apart, oh, there's already house there.
There's a variety of, of little driveways that take off of Cove Road in all sorts of different directions. My guess is for Lot three, it probably has one of those driveways, but under this particular scenario...
I see what's that, that dotted line looks like a, was a driveway or something. It goes from Lot four...
Yeah, that's a current, that's a current driveway.
Oh, so that's a driveway.
That's the existing, yeah.
Yeah.
The existing, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But we're only looking at it from the standpoint of...
Meeting the criteria.
Meeting the criteria for suitable access and frontage, that's all.
And it does that, so let me just go look at the street and come back in two, you know, like two weeks maybe, Joe.
So long as, so long as you can do it before the 21 days expires.
All right.
Did they file it, consider it filed today, Evan?
Yes, consider it filed today.
All right, then it's 21 days from today, which you have another meeting on, what, March?
If you can go Friday and...
Then I'll come and see Evan and say, yes.
Because they're trying to close on Monday.
Got it.
So, if, if that could be...
I'll even try to go tomorrow. I, I gotta just do...
That would be great.
Yeah, I'll go in the morning before I go, get what I have to do.
So can we, can we endorse the plan and you keep it in your office until he checks things out, and then if it works out, we can come by and pick it up, and then they can move forward with the closing?
It, it really, this is just my opinion, but it should be a vote of the board whether or not the access is suitable.
No, I can't do that, because...
I don't think so. Yeah, that's...
I mean, I'd even like you to go to the fire department and see what they say.
Yeah, 'cause the...
The fire truck, maybe 14 feet, at least.
The, the fire department is a separate issue that would be handled through zoning for buildability of the lots. I think the criteria that you need to look...
I don't think that would be appropriate under the subdivision control law to talk about that. It may be something, if somebody wants to get a building permit...
Then they have to...
And the fire department doesn't consider the access adequate, then they would have to appeal to the ZBA.
What's the existing, the status of the existing conditions of the road?
It varies. Once you get to the bottom of the grade, and I don't remember exactly how far it is, but you get down there at the bottom of the hill, when I was there the other two, day, there were two big puddles right in the middle of the road, and then it immediately narrows down to almost a car width. You go another couple hundred, maybe 300 feet, and it narrows down even more than that. So I think it's appropriate just to make that determination in this case.
That's why I asked where the driveway is to get that lot, and that, it don't even come down here, because it's probably like, too hot. But he already got access to it, he might have to give an easement through this lot. That's, we don't even look at that.
Right.
Right. So, approval, what do we...
When's, when's the first meeting in March?
It's the 6th of March. That's 16 days. Excuse me, just last February, we have fewer days. On March 6th, you would be within your 21-day window.
That's, that's fair.
So with this contingency of March, should we take a vote on this also? But you can't do anything.
I do need a signature on the filing of the plan.
All right. No, we'll take a motion, we'll take a vote on it. Approval not required.
Hold on, one's, audience...
She'd like to speak.
Hi, my name is Linda Edson. I represent the Thurbers. I just wanted to tell you from personal knowledge of the property, looking at this plan that Matt did, if you look at the very last line on this plan, it's past Lot one, and it goes to the gentleman who lives next door. You see the house is down here? It's the absolute last line on, on this plan. Just past that, on this road, is a round turning area before the road narrows, I know what you're speaking of, and it gets dirt, that's past this next lot over from us.
That's why I've gone there to see.
Yeah, but, but there's a turning area there for any vehicle, and the road doesn't narrow until after that property.
It was widened, it was widened out at that area back when, I don't know whether it was that plan that Evan, you showed or not, but I remember it being done at that time.
Yeah.
If that's where it is, it may be perfectly fine.
It is, and thank you.
That's why I've gone there, just to see where that thing was. And then I remember, Charlie, driving down there, I said, what the hell did I come down here for? I had to back out, you know? It was like, ugh.
Would you like us to request a continuance, or are you all right?
Make a vote, we gotta, make a motion. Actually, we, until we take a look?
You don't need a continuance. I mean, statute of law, you have 21 days from the date of filing to render a decision.
Oh, okay, so it's filed, so we'll take a vote, um, March 6th, I'm on it.
Take a... He said, he said you didn't need the continuance.
If, if the plan's not endorsed, we'll keep it on the agenda for March 6th, and it'll be, a vote can be taken.
I'll have to go look and just to make sure, you know, I'm satisfied with the thing is...
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, and then come back, you know? March 6th, but that's gonna mess you up then, right? I don't wanna hold it up over here.
If, if she's, if what the lady said was true, that that round area is at the end of the last line on the plan, which is below, below Lot three...
Yeah.
The construction to that point is pretty good. I mean, it's paved, it was constructed 20 years ago, I guess, when, when that work was done. If we're sure that that's where it is, then I don't have a problem with the plan.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the plan either, but I never think of the road, remember.
Well, we get 21 days, so...
Yeah, but she wants us to file and say, so she can go get a loan.
Yeah, but then we still have 21 days, right?
If you vote on it tonight to endorse the plan, that's it.
Then we're all done.
Hold on, one second. Let me submit this area.
Show Charlie, Charlie.
Okay, yeah, show that to the board, because that's what I was referring to.
This actually documents the pavement pretty well, the construction pretty well.
I'm fine with this now.
It is the turnaround area.
I'm fine with this now, because that looks, it's all paved and...
Yeah, if that's, that's where it shows, then it's well beyond the lot.
And that's the end of the lot, that's our lot right here, that line.
Yeah, so this is our...
And that's, the house is already here, and that's the driveway down here that we get in there.
Well, she's not gonna be using this driveway, though.
For now, she is.
The question is, is this, this road is suitable?
That's suitable.
It is.
I'll show Dave.
Here, you can keep this for your...
All right, keep it for the record.
I'll, I'll give it to Jen. I've, I think I've seen it before.
That's, there's a, they could turn around there. It's pretty good size. It's got this house here, this driveway.
So that is a service, though, it doesn't provide access to this for the fire department only along the frontage?
Yeah, but that is a driveway here now.
The reason that doesn't show is because it's not paved, is that...
No, it is paved. It is paved.
The round above?
It is.
But it doesn't.
It's got a couple of puddles in it, but...
This house, if there was a house here.
It probably needs some maintenance, and the last 19 years ago, it probably hasn't had an awful lot, because...
It may as well be.
It goes back up again once you get beyond that, and there's a lot of dirt there, and it, it just had two puddles in it, but to that point, it's fine.
When they come for the permit to build it, then you...
Yeah, so the applicant's demonstrated...
Is this the one we're gonna sign?
Say it again?
Is this the one we're gonna sign?
We have the Mylar in full sets over here, but lots of adequate land area, there's adequate frontage.
Yeah.
And I believe, based on the image that Matt showed, that access is adequate to endorse the plan, if...
I, I would agree.
If the board would like to make a motion, if the chair would allow it.
Do we have that stamp that says it's not a building permit, though?
You don't need to, Dennis.
All right.
Each one of these lots has frontage on Cove Road. The only question I had was where was that turnaround with respect to the frontage? And it appears it's down beyond the last lot, so that being the case, I think it qualifies in all respects for an A and R.
I make a motion, approval for approval not required.
264 Plymouth Pond Road.
So, um...
Plymouth Pond Road.
Lot three, though, as far as the easements and access, access goes over the other lots to the looking...
But not looking at access to it.
Yeah, the, the existing access. You're just looking at the frontage on Cove Road.
Even if Lot three...
Yeah, and then, because this is just giving, saying he has access to get to these lots, not a building permit.
Okay.
He still has to go to the building department.
They're, they're gonna construct a new driveway for Lot three.
Yeah, they, they do all that, then we get, when he comes back, all we, oh, when the approval not required, all we go get is 150 feet on a roadway, and you can get a variance on that, too.
Just frontage, lot area.
In the lot area, yeah. We need a second.
Dennis, I think that statement you're looking for is just above where you're gonna sign it.
All right.
No determination as to compliance with zoning requirements has been made or intended by this endorsement under Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81.
All right, yeah. That was a thing we put in there, because people thought, oh, I got building permit now.
Exactly.
All right, so...
A second, a second?
Yeah, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we sign.
You're in, Dennis.
But the date.
The date is, what?
Andy having that...
February 20th.
Yeah. Thanks for that, Matt.
Thank you.
It helped out.
Guys, we can sign these...
So that's date approved, that's 2/20, right?
Yes, yesterday's date.
Joe, is that these originals over here?
Yep.
With the Mylar, and then this, obviously, there.
I will obtain it from Matt if you want to keep yours for the, for the record, that would be just fine, and I'll email it to the board.
Dave, do you want me to make a copy for you? Do you want it right now?
How many you got, Evan, just two?
Yeah, just two. I scan one, and the original go with Matt to record.
I can sign this one, too, so we have three.
That's fine.
Joe, where's the one that's put the date on?
I have another large scale one over here.
Right in front of you.
But I'm, I'm reducing paper in the office. We're going, we're going digital.
Great news.
We're going digital. I just need Matt to get that recorded, and I only need one copy to scan, and then it's out of there.
Good.
And then you're gonna get one to that.
Hmm, that's it.
Oh, have, have to die, right?
Yeah.
And do we put that date signed over also?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just sign on Mylar, or...
It was, sorry.
Yeah, I'll keep one, one paper copy to, to scan and put in my files, but I'm not retaining any more paper. I don't have to, actually, find the paperwork.
That's a good idea. And then you gotta back it up, though.
It's a massive, it's a heavy lift getting all the paper in our office organized. Joe, if I could have your signature on the notice of filing, and I would like three copies of that, please. Did you just take the Mylar? I'll keep the one sheet, the other signed document to scan.
It was two signed.
No, that's fine. You just need the Mylar, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you very much.
Can you give your final fee? Down at, at the back, right?
Paid.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
See you.
Bye.
Good night.
Thank you. Should move through the rest of the agenda items moderately rapidly.
Just quickly, through the chair, last meeting, two weeks ago, I came in late, and I missed some testimony from a person who started to say some things about me in my company that were not true. They were complete lies. I submitted some information to the board to prove that I have nothing to do with what she's talking about. I just want you to know that I, I think it's, I think she operates in a parallel universe, and I don't understand anything that she's doing, other than it's deliberately, and her sole purpose is to try to hurt me for some reason. So I'm not gonna put any more effort or call attention or drama to this. I've been advised by some people, I really respect their opinion, to take the high road, so I'll do that, and I believe that our legacy, my reputation can withstand such attacks, because we do an outstanding job for our clients at all times, and we work to get better and better every day. So I just wanted the board to know that I didn't hear what was said, I didn't even know what was said until I left. Had I known, I would have addressed it immediately. All I ask is that in the future, even if it's unrelated to me, if anybody stands up in this forum, that you keep them focused on the projects, and you don't let them...
Well, Mary, Mary did stop that person all over...
I, I'm sure, everybody's by surprise.
She did.
It was very, I've never seen anything like it.
When people do that, it goes money on, off the other, I don't pay attention, because this ain't the place you bring up people's names.
Again, I am very confident in our reputation and our abilities and the track record that we leave and the people that we are. It's just a little unfortunate that people that don't know us and don't know me might hear something like that and think otherwise, but I just want to get the truth on the record. And for the benefit of some members that aren't here tonight, I am already coming for another project at our next hearing, so I might say something similar but more succinct, because I just, I want you to hear it from me, that's all.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
Chair, if I can just make one comment, because Matt will be back before the board at our next meeting. Pursuant to Chair Wiggins' request to submit the comments to Town Council, we did receive a reply, and we were, I was advised to share with the board that the planning board has no authority or reason to, to vet or question the credibility or licensure of any, any consultant that an applicant may choose to engage with. And the individual who spoke at the last meeting, not regarding an application before the board, but regarding the credentials of the consultant the applicant had sought services from... consultant the applicant had sought services from, um, uh, was, uh, excuse me, was, losing my train, uh...
That's right, though.
It was, uh, well, was speaking, um, you know, beyond the scope of, of what this board is, 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 is charged with, with reviewing, um, and, and I think we should leave it at that, Town Council also advised that, um, when, uh, issues like that are raised, that are clear issues of defamation, it's, when it's a verbal slander...
Yeah.
Or, um, and then when it gets written into public record, it becomes potential libel implication, so we should always, uh, take caution and, and focus on the merits of an application, um, that are before us, and I think that's it.
Yeah, and that's the way I feel, I, you know...
Like I said, I'm not worried about anybody in this room, um, I'm just, I wanna make sure that people that may have heard that last time and don't know me, hear me, um, tell the truth about the matter.
You know, when you were an old boy, I had your, I fired a couple of jobs from there, like 34 years ago.
Yeah, I've been surveying since I was six, didn't start paying attention until about 19 or 20. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. See you in a couple of weeks. See you in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Chris, his father?
Yeah.
Pass on the next one, right?
No new business.
And, uh, pass on the next one?
Yeah.
What's the next one?
Discussing an update of application.
And we'll pass on the next one, too.
I wanted to note, Joe, just with the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, uh, in your packet today, I, this was a request I had made to this board for a letter of support for a grant opportunity the town is pursuing, I've included a draft of that, uh, application, you'll...
Yes.
Um, we'll keep it on the agenda, um, the chair had requested to see this application prior to offering support, you'll see that that is merely outlining the town's commitment to the program, no technical, technically substantive information, uh, but you have a draft, it's still being, uh, tweaked here and there, but, um, uh, the content won't be altered all that much.
So the people have to...
But, um, please, if you, if you would review it, um, we'd appreciate the board's support.
Good.
And, uh, we'll pass on the release of funds, too, right?
Um, I, I kept this on the agenda because I wasn't certain if Conrad...
The construction of the road, right, Charlie, do you look at it?
Uh, let's see, Katua Solar, I'm still waiting from Conrad to get back to me and tell me that he's modified that gravel approach that he was supposed to put on according to the plan, the approved plan, other than that, um, you know, as soon as he tells me that it's done, I'll go back out there and take another look, so I don't know that you need to keep it, well, it's up to you, if you wanna keep it on the agenda, you can, but I haven't heard back from him since I asked him to modify the material he put in there.
Yeah, but this one says Oakley Highlands, oh, yeah.
It's two.
Yeah, that's a different one.
It's different.
Oh, two different ones.
It's the last one, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I don't wanna be, be careful, go out of order here, Chair, but, uh, so, would you like an update on my conversations with Jacques Morin about posting bond for the roadway?
Oh, all right, sure, sure.
Um, he, I spoke with his, his bank today, the issue with what was initially provided, we discussed this at the last meeting, was, uh, it only was an agreement between two private individuals, and there was no mechanism in the agreement to allow the town to, uh, utilize those funds in case of default of the obligations to provide services and adequate construction in ways to finish the work. Um, I talked with Charlie, and what they're drawing up is a tri-party agreement between Jacques Morin, his, um, mortgage provider...
Yeah.
and the town, so in the case of default, there's a mechanism in place in the agreement, um, for the town to, to utilize those funds to complete the work. That's in progress, and I would anticipate that'll be before the board again on March 6th with some type of complete agreement.
So we messed up then?
No.
Oh.
No, all you did was approve the amount to be secured.
That's right.
Um, what he needed to do was to provide either cash, which you've seen many times from, uh, New Seabury, or, um, a performance bond from an insurance company, or an agreement between the bank, the town, and the applicant, uh, it's called a tri-party agreement, it isn't used as often as others, but it is allowed under the subdivision control law as one of the, the ways in which you can secure the construction, so, so long as the format of that ultimate agreement is acceptable...
No.
You know, Town Councils probably take a look at it before you sign it...
Yeah.
But that's one mechanism that you can use, so Devon's right, that just having a private party agreement between the applicant and the bank does the town no good, because if he defaults on it, you have no way of getting access to the funds.
Make sure we don't do that.
Well, what I learned was that, um, the, um, insurance-backed performance bond, uh, applicants who are neighborhood developers are not eligible for a performance bond, a performance shorty, which is why Jacques couldn't get a bond, uh, so he, um, he, he either has to post cash or do a tri-party agreement with the bank, those were his options, so that's what he's kinda been coming back with.
Okay.
For the value already determined.
Okay. No chairman report?
Uh, I did speak with Chair Wiggins, Joe, this is, uh, just an announcement to the board to reserve Monday, March 4th, on your calendars, for the joint meeting with regulatory boards, similar to the wastewater discussions about affordable housing, it'll be at 6:30. Uh, the presentations will be from, uh, the Cape Cod Commission, who you've met before at a recent meeting, um, representatives from Housing Assistance Corporation, and, um, Alan Isbits, and, um, of the Affordable Housing Committee and some colleagues, a similar format to the wastewater discussion.
I'll be there.
We'll see ya.
And my mouth won't be shut again. I ask all the questions on that.
Board member committee reports, do we have enough here?
No, I have no historical mission, what about the design review, Joe?
Uh, no, design review?
What's the other one you're on, uh?
Uh, we, we actually, the, uh, the past two meetings have been postponed or canceled.
Cape Cod Commission, uh, nothing to report.
Planner, he's nothing to report.
Well, environmental oversight, we did have...
Oh, that's the one you're on, yeah.
A meeting.
What'd you have? Am I waiting to marry guns, or?
Uh, no, I, I guess we could do it, uh, yeah, let's see, get my notes, uh, let's see, where we start with, uh, the MVP, the Mass Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, uh, a letter has been sent to Evan, okay?
Thank you, Joe, Environmental Oversight Committee.
Uh, funds have been approved for the gardens.
Oh.
Uh, the first, uh, shellfish suspension has happened.
Good.
They actually, yeah, caught somebody, I guess it's probably been going on...
They stole from my neighbors.
Yeah.
The birches.
And, uh, he was caught stealing, and, uh, and through this, I guess it kind of mushroomed, uh, he had, uh, put in some number of, I, I should've put the number down, but it was in the thousands, like, oysters or clams.
Twenty thousand, something like that.
Yeah, it was in the thousands. Well, they should've been tagged with the number, and, uh, because if somebody got sick, and then, you know, the board helped to go back to where they bought them, and there was no identification of where they were bought, of, of where they came from, so that has started a, a program now where everybody has to now tag their shellfish when they bring them in, and so that the board of health will know where they came from.
Everyone?
No, they're, they're, they're in bags.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, everyone.
Oh, I missed a number, where'd that guy go?
Well, unless you teach them how to speak English, you know, and then they could tell you where they came from. Uh, so, uh, where am I now, uh, no, 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 uh, the Mashpee Nutrient Control Bylaw, uh, lawns are gonna comply at John's Pond, they've got the society there that, they're gonna comply with the pond, uh, let's see. On, uh, was it the, uh, Southport, they're going to spend $40,000 to irrigate the, uh, the golf course at John's Pond, of which I didn't know there, oh, no, to irrigate the golf course. At John's Pond, the fish ladder, uh, is going to be repaired because of a low herring count.
No.
Uh, let's see, the Quasnet River Restoration, uh, they got, uh, $844,000 from the Air Force, the Air Force has finally come true, they got a new lawyer, and the new lawyer contested what the old lawyer had done, and it's kinda gone on, and so, but, and they got no timeframe, uh, to complete the work, so they could, if, you know, they were supposed to, a couple of years ago, it would be two years or three years, and now they could, if it took four years or five years, that would be okay. Uh, plus the, uh, let's see, they get thirty, uh, $320,000 from CPA, and $20,000 from the Child River, uh, Charles River Restoration of Falmouth, and, uh, then I think David would like to hear this, the, uh, they plan to restore Santuat Pond, and, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers is going to fund a study where they're going to dredge the bottom of the entire pond.
Uh, but they need to really do all that.
And, uh, and Chucky Green has come up with the suggestion, which they're thinking of implementing, is to take the dredging and filling in the, uh, the cranberry bogs in the low point in the cranberry bogs, rather than spending the money to truck it offsite.
Yeah.
So, we have plenty of cranberry bogs, except the Conservation Department has to kinda figure out if, where they wanna put the dredgings, are there any endangered species, whether there be plant or fish or animal in that area where they wanna put the dredging. Uh, and the dredgings are filled with phosphorus, so they have to kinda figure out...
But they gotta...
They, they think that that's gonna be kinda harmless, and, uh, they're gonna do a new study at, uh, Santuat Pond because of the, uh, the poor results of the herring count, so that was it. Oh, and I have to tell Dave this one, I brought up the point about the, uh, the white birch, and they're looking into that, they already were, and that's, although they're, because of, like, endangered species and stuff like that, they're gonna put them where they can.
The white cedar.
White cedar, white cedar, yeah.
Yeah, they, I mean, if these recreate...
Yeah, on the restoration of, of the bogs.
Yeah, if they restore the bogs with the dredge material, I don't know if that's suitable environment to promote the white cedar.
Chuckie's in charge, he's, he's keeping an eye on it, so...
That's not my area expertise, but it sounds good, I like the idea.
So, that was the meeting. And, uh, what's...
Yes, update, town planner.
Updates from town planner?
Uh, briefly, um, we, we, being the town, um, uh, have submitted, um, a request for proposals, it's now available, um, for the 950 Falmouth Road Affordable Housing Project, um, so if you know of, that the potential of interested developers, they can receive the RFP on comp buys, or from the town manager's office, that's for a sixty, up to 69 bedroom affordable housing development at 950 Falmouth Road, uh, and, um, zoning bylaw amendments I provided in your packet, um, this temporary signed bylaw with the, uh, edits, suggestions, uh, amendments, uh, that the board had identified at our last meeting for your review, that's it.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
No. I had to go one time. Uh, yes.
Okay, yes.
Good meeting.
Very efficient.
Yeah. C O M M, like Commonwealth buys, comp buys, C O M M.
B U I S.
Thanks, everyone, pretty swift.
Yeah.